Good evening and welcome to the June 10th City Council meeting. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Curran.
Here.
Councilmember Doerr.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Littrell.
Here.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bales.
Mayor Adams.
Here.
Motion to excuse Vice Mayor Bales.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to excuse Vice Mayor Bales. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Councilmember Garcia, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, thank you so much. If you could all stand and join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if you could all remain standing for just a few moments, we had the honor of having a swearing-in today for two of our officers, one promotion to sergeant, one promotion to captain, and I just wanted to take the time to, I know last month we had our police week that we have annually, but just a reminder to keep all of our law enforcement in your thoughts and prayers. My family unfortunately had a very bad car accident last week, and our law enforcement up in Columbus was the first one on the scene, first one to help. They came to visit my father in the hospital after, and our law enforcement here in Beaver Creek is second to none. And just the law enforcement around the country that gives so much of their time to help others and to be there in somebody's worst moments, and so many times, you know, you can be that person having the worst moment that needs that law enforcement officer. So if we could all just have a quick moment of silence in remembrance of all of our officers here in Beaver Creek, but across the country and across the state. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have an agenda before us. Any changes?
Move we approve the agenda, Your Honor?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as written. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We also have a set of minutes from the May 28, 2024, regular meeting. Any additions, changes?
I have a motion to approve the minutes from May 28, regular meeting.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the May 28, 2024, minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Moving on. Public hearing, Turner PUD 23-5, Ella's Garden.
PUD 23-5, SSP number one. An application filed by Grand Communities LLC 3940 Olympic Boulevard, Suite 400, Erlanger, Kentucky 41018. The applicant requests approval of a specific site plan to allow development of 96 single-family residential homes on 46.864 acres of land. The property is located on the north side of Swigert Road, approximately 800 feet east of the intersection of Swigert Road and Darst Road, further described as Book Three, Page 24, Parcel One, on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
This hearing was closed last week to be continued, or two weeks ago to be continued, so we need a motion to reopen.
Mayor, I move to reopen the public hearing as continued from the May 28, 2024 meeting for only those residents not in attendance, and were unable to speak due to possible notification issue.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to reopen and continue the meeting May 28. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? I'd like to ask Mr. Burkett to come forward and update some changes that were made by council, or requests were made by council last meeting.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As stated, the public hearing was tabled last, or last meeting, and there was four specific concerns that City Council had about various topics on the, on the project. So I went through the conditions of the motion, changed the landscape, but you can see the, these are the text of the changes, the new verbiage is in red, changed the name, or the date of the landscape plan to the plans that we received last week, and I'll go through those a little bit here in a minute. Changed the hours of construction where we, the morning was either 7:00 AM or dawn, whichever comes later, and in the evening, construction should end by 7:00 PM or dusk, whichever comes first. Also, there was concerns on the scope of which the developer would pay for the straightening or the softening of the curve of Swigert, so we added some specific language in there that they'll be paying for the construction of the roadway, but also acquisition of right-of-way, cost extent of sidewalk along the length of that project, and those are specifically spelled out in the, in the conditions. On condition number 10, and I know there was concern about having only one tree on the lot, so this one added a second tree, this one to be planted in the rear of the house, and can't be within that 25-foot no-grading limit that's found in condition number 13. And then there was concerns about, the development has kind of two categories of homes, one the masterpiece and one the designer series, and the designers, kind of the smaller home, so they're intended to be on the smaller sites, and so there was concern that, about a masterpiece home being on a smaller site and making it look too crowded. And so we added a condition that the masterpiece series or should Fisher, you know, we've seen this in the past, and I'm not saying it's going to happen, but should another developer come in, something comparable to the masterpiece series cannot be on the lots 1 through 43 or 89 through 96 depicted in Exhibit C, and then this was Exhibit C that was attached to the motion to show where those specific lots were. They're, they're along the north frontage of Swigert as well as near the center of the project. Again, the, we did receive an updated landscape plan last week, and I know that there was concerns of screening along Swigert Road. We had them also add in the lot trees to show, just to give an idea, these, not necessarily specifically exactly where a lot is going to go on a lot tree, but just to show that there were two lots on each tree, and just kind of go page by page because they're kind of zoomed in, but the first two sections, one at the front entrance and then one along the northern section of Swigert, you know, shows a good amount of landscaping at the entrance for the decorative features, and then also along Swigert for screening. And then the, the three southern kind of inserts shown here, two of them along Swigert, and again, they show small mounds with evergreen and deciduous trees along the right-of-way to help screen the, the homes, the back of the homes from Swigert Road. And then I went ahead and added a colorized version just to get an idea of the amount of landscaping that they're going to be putting in the, the project. And you can see on this, they have those second lot trees, the ones in the back, they're kind of right along that 25-foot nut cut zone, so want to make sure that those are pulled forward, but that's nothing we have to condition, I mean, we'll just make, ensure that the final plan shows those out of that area. And then finally, this was just to give a closer view of, it's kind of turned a little bit, but it shows all the landscaping that they're proposing along Swigert Road to help kind of soften the look of the neighborhood from the public right-of-way. There are 33 conditions in your motion still. Planning Commission and staff recommend approval of the applicant's request, they've met everything in the PUD conditions, as well as in the zoning code for this type of development, and I'll be happy to answer any further questions after the public hearing.
Thank you.
Randy, what's the height on those shrubbery along Swigert?
There's, I looked, some of the pine, the evergreen trees, they were varied between six and eight feet tall, and then the shade trees, they're, instead of height, they go by how round it is at chest level and they're two and a half inch.
I was just concerned when pulling out.
They'll, we'll ensure.
Site will not be impacted?
Yeah, what I'll do is, and I do this with every landscape plan, particularly when it's a neighborhood, is to ensure, I send it to the final plan, to the engineer, and he draws the site triangles, make sure that there's ample.
All right.
Site distance.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we'll reopen the public hearing. Now, this is only for people that were not here two weeks ago. If you were here, whether you spoke or not, we closed the public portion of that, so this is only for people that were not here. And you have three minutes. Come up, we state your name and address. If you spoke last time, you can't speak this time.
Oh, I really can't. Do I have this?
Good evening. Ed Garten, 3699 West Wind Drive in Beaver Creek, and I'm going to give over my three minutes to this young lady.
Hi, my name's Catherine Howard. Um, what is my name? My name is.
Did you speak last time?
I did. He's just donated his time to me.
No, you, if you spoke last time, you've already had your speaking time.
He just donated his time to me. That legally, if I was at the last meeting, he was there, he could have donated his last, his three minutes to me, and I could have spoken again.
Was that someone who was not present, because if you're present, under our rules, and under, actually under our rules, is that favor of service does not defect, but if you're present, you had the opportunity to speak. This is for people who were not present because there was a question about actually being served, and that was the one, one lady residence complaint was, or concern was that people who were not served, did not know about it, did not have an opportunity to speak, and so therefore, what council did was, because council had a right just to close the hearing, the council kept the hearing open to allow people who did not, who were not present, for whatever reason, to come and speak.
Correct.
And so if you were present last time, you were here, and you had the opportunity to speak, that's the point.
I understand that, except if you follow the fact that if the gentleman here was last time, then I would have been, would have donated three minutes, and I would have been able to continue speaking. So this is just a continuation from the last meeting, someone has donated their three minutes to me for me to present.
But we closed the hearing, the public hearing last time. This is only for people that were not here.
Temporarily.
But it was, that particular part was closed. If you had, everybody was given the opportunity to speak that was here.
This is our speech, this is kind of all of this stuff. I mean, just here, you guys.
Ladies and gentlemen, please, I don't like people coming on like that. This is a public hearing, let's keep it civil, okay?
The gentleman who donated his time, would you just?
Yeah, we'd like to hear. Can I listen? Also speak.
We have to ask.
So the gentleman who, I, I'm sorry, I missed your name, sir. You donated your time if you would like to speak since you were not here?
I've given you my three minutes, I'm going to give my three minutes to my neighbor, Al Gottwald.
Were you here last week to use feet? Yeah.
This was said, this was stated last week, that if the public hearing was closed for that, everybody that was here, we did this again, we continued it to allow for people that did not receive notification that we're not here.
You're right, and there are people that are trying to come, and they're running late, and they haven't had the opportunity, and I presented a presentation for you, spent my own personal money, a lot cheaper than a lawsuit, which I'm willing to go to.
Well, you can threaten all you want, I don't like threats, okay?
I don't either, but I don't like the dirty pool you're playing either.
What?
But the problem is, is that we just want to be heard.
You've been heard. I mean, everybody that wanted to speak has been heard.
We're not allowed to ask any questions, we just want to be able to have a conversation. What's the?
I thought we had a pretty good conversation two weeks ago. We responded to everybody, but I responded directly to, to your requests.
You did, sir, and I appreciate that, and I thank you for that, but the point is, is that you can ask your staff questions and make them respond, but we get three minutes, and if other things are brought up that we have questions about or that we want to talk about, we don't have that opportunity, and I don't see that as being open communication between city leaders and the community.
I'll refer to legal on this.
May I ask, ma'am, did you, did you have a chance to speak with our staff on this? Have you ever reached out to our staff to ask these questions as well, instead of asking in front of council as well?
You talking to me?
Yes, ma'am. Did you reach out to Mr. Burkett or?
There was no reason for me to reach out to staff because I've attended the meetings, and I've been able to speak when I get my allotted three minutes. Now, in response to when other people, members of city council or whatever position you all hold here within the city, do I go back and correspond with them? Sometimes I do, but not very often.
I just wanted to make sure you weren't saying that your questions weren't being answered by staff as well, because there's always the opportunity outside of city council meetings, there is always the open opportunity for residents to interact with city staff, and they are always.
All right, let's, let's hold up now. Ma'am, I'm going to give you your three minutes.
I appreciate that.
Excuse me, can I get your name and address again?
Yeah. Ed Garten, G-A-R-T-E-N, 3699 West Wind Drive.
All right. I've given you a hand, once again, my name is Catherine Howard, I live at 3766 Mesquite Drive, I am on the new thoroughfare there. I am the precinct, Central Committee Chair for Precinct 19. I represent over 500 homes in the community of registered voters. They have, I, I talk to them, they talk to me, there's a correspondence going there. So I know how a lot of people feel on the situation. I've given you a handout from, based on the last situation that we had. Is somebody mind holding this post shirt for me? I can do it? Thank you.
This doesn't take for months for you to.
It needs to be on the camera over here. It needs to have it on the camera. I'm standing on this side for the camera.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay. So on this first one, it goes over the lot sites, and you were talking about how it's acceptable to have a 0.19 acres for the lot sizes, that's approximately 81,000 square feet. If it's by curbside, which is the net, the setbacks, you'd have 30 feet in the front, 40, 35 in the back. According to the builder, Fisher Homes, they're going to have somewhere between 16,000 to 5,000 square feet. Flip it over to the next page, you're going to see my house. My house is 0.146 acres. I have a 3,000-square-foot home, I have a side entrance, side entry garage, and I have a very mature red maple tree in the front yard. If you are going to put an 81-square-foot home with a 35 setback and a 30 on the front, you get two on my property. There is no physical way for you to get one of the beautiful homes that they are building, plus two mature trees, plus a side entry, or even a driveway on that postage stamp. So I'm asking you to reconsider the sizes of the plot sizes. Here, you need to have this one for the community to see. You can go on to Google Maps and do the exact same thing, and measure out exactly 30 feet by 268 feet, 35 across the back to measure up to get this dotted lines that I have. If you flip over to the next page, I have on your thing, I have their yellow arrows. City council can require adjustments to proposal of lot lines if there is a compelling reason. Go back to my property, that is a compelling reason. You cannot physically fit these beautiful homes that they're trying to build with the required trees that we are asking to represent Ella's Garden on these plot sides. Even if you change the curbside to 60 up front, literally lock that property in half, that dotted line in half, you still cannot physically fit two trees, a reasonable-sized home that they're proposing, and a driveway with a garage in that plot size. So that's all I have to say, thank you for giving me the time today, I just need you to really seriously consider what you have going on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Al Gottwald, I live at 3664 West Wind Drive. Several of the concerns that I have relate to the connecting neighborhoods, Walnut Grove and Hawthorne Glen, I live in Hawthorne Glen. Hawthorne Glen being the older neighborhood, Walnut Grove was built afterwards, and then going out to Harmling, which goes out to Fairfield Road. I know there's been a lot of discussion about Swigert, but I don't think any consideration has been given to the impact of the neighborhood to the adjoining neighborhoods. When we first spoke with the zoning commission, we were told the site map, to disregard it entirely, it was totally conjecture, it was, it had no meaning or basis, and yet that is the site map that has been proposed. Hawthorne Glen and Walnut Grove do not average half-acre lots. They are half-acre lots. Every house is half-acre lots. Every neighborhood that surrounds Hawthorne Glen are half-acre lots. So when we saw a neighborhood that is literally high density, because these are, you know, the majority of these lots are 8,000, or one-fifth of an acre, as opposed to the half-acre, so you're creating a high-density situation that's going to drive traffic into Walnut Grove and Hawthorne Glen. For example, most of our people work at Wright Pat or the Wright Pat area. The only way to get out of this new neighborhood is through, is to get to 675, they're not going to go out Swigert to Fairfield, they're not going to go out Swigert and then wrap around to Darst, they're going to shoot through Walnut Grove directly to Darst. That's going to dramatically increase the traffic into that neighborhood, because all that traffic is going to go out in the morning and then come home in the evening. As far as Hawthorne Glen is concerned, we're going to have an enormous increase in traffic, and Hawthorne Glen has no, was built with no sidewalks, and we have a lot of walkers, and we have a lot of older people, and there's no place for us to walk within Hawthorne Glen where there's sidewalks. People going to Indian Ripple are going to necessarily come through Southway and then go out Bramble Bush and go through Hawthorne Glen to get to Indian Ripple. If they want to go to Fairfield Road, the people that are closest to Swigert on that one entrance will go out to Swigert and over, but the rest of the people are going to go southward to Harmling. That is a ton of traffic that we're not expecting. And finally, I always knew the Turner Lot was going to sell, but we were told at the zoning commission that the lots are going to be the same as the adjoining neighborhoods, not the adjoining, not the surrounding lots, all the lots, we're going to be consistent with Walnut Grove and Hawthorne Glen. 8,000 square feet is not 20,000 square feet, which is a half acre. This is not what we were sold at the zoning commission meeting, this is not what we were sold at the follow-on meeting, and then we were told that the zoning is consistent with, or the lot sizes are consistent with the zoning that was done. That may be legally, but it's not what we were told at the original zoning meeting. We were told that site map was fantasy, just to ignore it, and yet that is the site map that's approved. At least consider a second entrance out on the Swigert so the people in that neighborhood can get to Darst some way other than shooting through Walnut Grove. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Joe Bradford, I live at 267 Southwood Trail, and everything that gentleman just said, I want to, I want to say the exact same thing, because he said it as well as anybody could say it. We're not, I'm not a public speaker, obviously, but everything he just said is exactly correct. All these, the one exit is going to be through Swigert, there's going to be, there may be up to 500 people living in this new section, up to 500, that's a small village. And the only access to that small village is the one exit to Swigert and then going through our neighborhoods, and they're not just going through a little section of neighborhood, they're going through a long section of neighborhood. They will go down, they will come, and he's exactly correct, they will come, most of those people who are going to be going to 675 or to the base or anywhere towards the, towards the west, they're going to go through our neighborhood, and with 500 people, we're talking a small village. He is exactly correct.
Thank you. Next.
Bark Human, 3584 Swigert Road. We've heard a lot about the same thing, so I don't want to dive way too far into them, but I am curious, at the last meeting, or two meetings ago, sorry, the last meeting, we talked about doing a new study on Swigert for traffic analysis. Has that been completed?
That was done.
It was done with the, with the plate.
Right.
Can we, can we hear about that later, or was that already shared?
That was shared.
Last time?
Wasn't that 2016 study though?
Yeah, they.
No, no, that was a more recent one, that was.
Well, it was done.
Beginning of May.
Beginning of May of this year, so.
Okay, can we get the results, or are they posted out there?
Uh.
If it's available, if you want to contact us, we're happy to.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. And then they also discussed two meetings ago, potentially lowering the speed limit to 35 miles an hour. Has that been decided, or where's that supposed to be?
We have been discussing that, that won't be decided here, but that is one of the top things that we're looking at.
Okay, great. And then the last one, just, just a thought, we've heard a lot about the adjacent neighborhoods, right, which I do believe is very important, and actually, if you look beyond them, so if you look at where this neighborhood's going in, and you look to the east of it, everything's five acres. You look to the north of it, it's half of its five acres, part of it's half acres. You go south, five acres, and then the adjacent one's all half acres, so it really does make sense to at least not go below the minimal-sized lots in its surrounding area.
You're looking at township versus city too, so there's a little difference there, so there.
Couple of them.
Yeah.
But your north and south aren't, so I think those are still city, right? And then my last part, and this is just not, not trying to criticize anyone, but it is very frustrating, and I know you guys are all public servants, and we do appreciate that, is it does get frustrating at the zoning meeting, you know, we, and you can go back and pull tapes, and we all have and seen them, we were literally told, hey, you are not allowed to talk about lot sizes here, that is not for this, this is, that will be for the next planning meeting, and we literally went to the planning meeting and got told the exact opposite. This cannot be talked about, it's already been decided at the zoning meeting, this is over, it's not up for debate. So, you know, if we can be more consistent, I think you would get a lot more community understanding, so it is very frustrating when it flip-flops like that and counter-dicks yourself, so that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just want to add, the 35 mile an hour speed limit, you want me to?
Come to the.
Thank you.
All right, Rebecca Griffith, I live at 3705 Swigert Road, and I live on the township side. So back to the speed limit issue, I think I've brought up several times about school buses colliding with heavy trucks going through there, and I just want everybody to relax about that and think about how you drive. I had a police officer tell me one time that if the speed limit's 35, that you're not going to get ticketed unless you're going over 45, or maybe even pushing 45. I can guarantee you that I pretty much go over the speed limit, and so does everybody else who drives on that stretch of road.
Chief, you want to talk to her?
Everybody else who goes from the stop sign at Stutzman and Darst and is going, what would that be, east up towards Fairfield Road, and I mean, they're not doing 35, I know they're not, because I live there, I'm out in the front yard doing yard work, they're not doing 35. Even if you lowered it to that, I mean, it's going to be a challenge, it really needs to be widened, and it definitely needs to be lowered, so, and then with regards to the landscaping, I'd really like to see that down there, if it's really going to create a buffer, I mean, a six-to-eight-foot-tall evergreen tree will provide some density, but, I mean, I'm almost six foot, I'll still be looking at the back of people's houses. And a two-and-a-half-inch-wide tree trunk is about a five-and-a-half-to-six-foot shade tree. That's not very much, it's going to take 10 years at least, if it's a fast-growing tree, for it to provide any type of buffer. So, thank you, thank you for being pleasant and letting us speak, I appreciate that.
Can I make another comment about this?
Do you have the time left? Okay, you've got a little time left, go ahead.
Another question about lot size, I think most of you already know that on Darst Road, where that real sharp bend is, Beaver Creek Township has already put that huge. where that real sharp bend is, Beaver Creek Township has already put that huge plat that has kind of same-sized house, sized, lot sizes that we're talking about. So there's one back entrance from that plat. All those cars are already coming out and are going to be going up Darst Road. And you, I don't know if you've ever seen that, but those houses, they look like they're about five feet apart. Some of them are, some of them seem like that. You might as well put them together. There's so little space. But there's a whole bunch of houses there, right across from the Baptist Church. And a lot of those people, they're going to come out that back entrance, and they're going to be using Darst Road. So all those people are using Darst Road. And the one entrance you have off to this new plat, they're going to be using Darst Road. So Darst Road is going to be inundated with a lot more traffic as well. So that's just another point.
Thank you.
Your question, if one is given up one's three minutes, can one?
Sir, you gave your time.
Okay, all right.
I'm sorry. Anyone else?
Hi there. My name is Tiffany Page. I live at 288 Palmetto Court. I'm sorry we were late, so I don't, I might be saying something that's already been spoken. As far as community impact, one of the concerns that I have, my youngest son is a Beaver Creek graduate. He just graduated this year. And in 2017, when he was in fifth grade at elementary school, there were approximately 470 students at the school. At this time, in this calendar year 23, 24, there were approaching 600 kids at Fairbrook. There are six trailer classrooms externally to the building at Fairbrook. Four of those classrooms hold fifth-grade students. One of the buildings includes an intervention specialist classroom, and the other building is for the gifted services teacher and the students attend their gifted services classes in that building. And so this community is supposed to be a move-up community. So to me, that says there's going to be a lot of families that are going to be with school-age children. And that increases the impact on our schools. And while it's my understanding you aren't supposed to consider the impact of our schools, it may be something that you have in the back of your mind for concern, that we, the community, have, given how difficult it is for levies to be passed and for the community to support our schools in the way that they need, and to maintain the quality of our education and the classroom size for our students. Thanks.
Mayor, is Mr. Garden, pardon me, is Mr. Garden eligible to speak if someone donates time to him? Okay.
Do I need to state my name again?
She'll have to state her name.
I've been married to her for 54 years.
Okay.
She knows who I am.
My name is Fran Garden. I live at 3699 West Wind Drive in Beaver Creek.
And I'm Ed Garden at 3699 West Wind Drive, Beaver Creek. This doesn't affect us because we're on, on South Wind or West Wind and Southway. But the mailbox issue that came up at the meeting two weeks ago on Swigert, I counted the mailboxes. There appeared to be 14 or 15, maybe 16 mailboxes on the opposite side of the road of Swigert. Now, with all the additional traffic, you know, some elderly people are going to be walking across that heavily trafficked, more heavily trafficked Swigert Road to get their mail. And oftentimes, those mailboxes are right on the road, I mean, within two or three feet of the road. So there are 14 or so mailboxes that need to be dealt with. Otherwise, I'm afraid some people are going to get hurt. I'm also concerned that this development has a common set of mailboxes for the houses. So in the evening, people are going to be driving up. They're not going to walk. And there are going to be four, five, or six cars there as people come to their common mailboxes. That doesn't sound right. We haven't, we haven't talked that much about the sheer amount of traffic when someone has a party in our neighborhood. And someone had a party just a couple of weeks ago. There were, I counted, 36 cars in our neighborhood parked all over the streets, and it was very difficult to get through. Now, with these houses so close together, you can imagine, you know, someone has a party, a graduation party, an anniversary party, there could be 30 or 40 cars parked up and down the streets. You know, how are emergency vehicles going to get through? That's a consideration that needs to be dealt with. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
And thanks to my wife for giving up.
Good evening. My name is Frank Duan. I live in 3901 Beaufort Grove. And I just have some concerns about the price, about this new house. The, okay, according to the presentation, and I have the screenshot here, and from the developer, and they stated that the, the single house, the square feet, is the 1,700 square feet. And for the two-story house, the medium size is 2,500 square feet. And the starting price, and they put it here, is 500,000. And with the average price for the designer's model is 615,000. And the average price for the masterpiece model is 850,000. Okay. Based on these figures, and the price per square feet is about 294 to 360. All right. So average is, per square feet is 328. So I just did some math about that. Then I did some comparisons. And look at the realtors.com. Okay. So the average or the medium listing price for the zip code 45440, where is this new house will be located? And the, the average price, the listing was 322,000, 322. The per square feet price is 160. You compare this, the average price to the new house price, they just doubled the price. Okay. Based on this information, I have two questions. How the developer just doubled this house price in this, the same area? So especially considering their lot size is such a small lot size. Okay. If the city, if you approve the project, will there be a oversight to make sure their price is really doubled, the average price here? If they, they're really doubled, I'll be happy as a homeowner because the, our value, the house value will be increased. Otherwise, you know, so it's where just drag the house down, you know, if the house is not real, if the value is not real. Okay. That's my questions and concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we will officially close the public part of this hearing. And council time. Councilwoman Garcia.
Yeah, I have a question. And I apologize, I was out of town last week, so I missed it. So if this was already covered, forgive me. But what is the actual lot sizes for each parcel?
They do vary.
What's this, let's go smallest. What's the smallest lot size?
The smallest was 8,000 and 60 square feet, about 0.19 acres. And those are the, the center lots, kind of the centrally-located lots. Sorry, this is slow.
So 60 feet wide would be the smallest, as you're saying?
Yes, at the rezoning stage, and based on the zoning code in the PUD sect, RPUD section, it said no lot should be less than 60, 60 feet wide. And that's what we were talking about.
Thanks. I just wanted to make sure. And then I also missed, I apologize, is there a diagram showing sidewalks? Where the sidewalks would be?
In terms of internal?
Yes.
They're along, on both sides of every road.
Okay.
If you see the, kind of like the thicker line on each side of the road.
All right.
I don't know if I got a better picture of it, but.
Where's your Vanna White laser? You don't have that on the way?
Well, I have the laser, but it won't show up on the TV screen. Like, you can kind of see him in that one, where it's like the, yeah.
Okay. Is there, will those be connected to the adjoining neighborhoods? Or?
Where there is sidewalk, they'll be connected, yeah.
Okay, great. I just wanted to make sure. I wasn't sure if that was all connected, or if it was just internally connecting the neighborhood.
No, I mean, if there's, the stub streets that they're proposing to connect to, if there's a sidewalk, they'll connect to those sidewalks.
Okay. And would that, so that's across the entire roadway frontage as well, then? Does that question make sense?
Along Swigert? No, it's just internally.
Okay. Is that something that we would be able to see along the Swigert as part of the development?
Typically, well, the subdivision regulations state that they should put a sidewalk along the entire length of Swigert. But internally, staff had the discussion and felt that it would, it better serve the general public, instead of having them use the money to build curb, sidewalk, and gutter along Swigert, to use that money to help soften the curb on, on Swigert, north of their project, or east of their project.
Yeah, because I was just thinking that would be nice for any additional developments that may come in, to already have that already on the frontage. But I see what you're saying there. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they are not obligated to do the soften, that curve. But it's kind of a.
Okay.
Use that to pay for the curb rather than the sidewalk.
Were they going to extend that sidewalk along that curb as part of the, one of the new conditions?
The language said that they should extend the sidewalk along the frontage of that property. So it should end right where that white, or about where that white line ends. Now they can, yeah, about there. So they, yeah, go down to that.
Yeah, and they agreed to do that, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I think that's it for me right now. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Schwartz.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I have a similar question. Could you go back to that corner photo? Okay, so we have the sidewalks that are going to, presumably that's the north, I don't really know, to the east. We're going to call it that. Where do those end? At, at the Turner property?
Right now, you mean where will they end?
Mm-hmm.
They'll end at where that, into that curb project.
Other side. I'm sorry, Randy.
On the other side. I'd have to find an aerial of the whole area, but I believe they go over to, I'm sorry about flipping all around here. I don't know which. They go up to Fairfield, South Fairfield Road.
Okay, so maybe I'm disoriented.
I'm discombobulated. I don't know where my, what slides where. There you go.
Okay, this is helpful. Thank you.
So they connect to that.
So they connect all the way out. Okay. And then can you move that over, please? And they're going to go all the way around, and then they're going to stop at the new development? Is that correct?
Stop north of, stop right where that curb project ends. I mean, there'll be an opportunity, should they want, that can connect it internally across their common area into their neighborhood.
Is there enough room, should we want to install sidewalks, curb, and gutter there, that they could with the landscaping plan that's proposed?
Yes, they, they have, they'll be dedicating 40 feet of right-of-way. And then after that 40 feet is when the common area starts, and that's where they'll put the landscaping.
Okay. So, well, I'm not going to get into that. Street parking, there were some concerns by Mr. Gardner about street parking. Can you address whether the street parking within this new allotment, what that's going to look like? Is it going to be permitted?
Yeah, I mean, these are, these are public roads. They're going to be built to the same width as, not some, there were some, at one point, there was a neighborhood where the roads were a little bit too narrow. And knowing that neighborhood, it's hard to park on the streets. But these are going to be like the new neighborhoods, the 25-foot-wide streets where you can park. And there's no, there's no plan at this time to disallow parking on the street, just like most neighborhoods in the city.
So there should be enough room that the fire department doesn't have any concerns if there were two cars parked?
If you've got, you know, 10, two seven-foot wide. I mean, we've showed the plans to them. I mean, if there's an issue, they would bring it up. But we've showed the plans to the fire department.
Okay.
And there's alternative ways around, too, if they need to go around differently.
I think that is all the questions I have at this point. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Randy.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Littrell.
Yes. I don't have anything for you.
Okay, cool.
You did a great job. Thanks. I, I just, we did kind of rehash a lot of this last meeting. But I did want to make comment to a lot of the things that I heard tonight kind of repeated from last week. A lot of the, most of the citizens that live in the area are mostly concerned with the, the size of these lots. And I, on my own, just went into reading. And, and I don't live on a 8,000-square-foot lot. I live in Beaver Creek, and I live on lot sizes more like yours. And that's what I prefer. But what I've, what I'm learning is people who are buying houses, $600,000 houses, are wanting small lots. That's, these, these builders are actually providing their customers with what the customers are actually wanting. It may not be for anybody in this room. It's not for me. But that is what they are doing. And they are getting these prices for these houses. We may not see them today, but five years from now, they'll be selling these houses at that price. It, it's amazing to me, too. The, the lot size, even though it feels like it's impacting the density of that area, you're still looking at a 49 square, is it 49 acres? Is that what that was? Total? 46, 46 total acres?
46.9.
Okay. So now we have a 46-acre area, and the requirements of Beaver Creek, when you build a new area, we're building sidewalks. And they're building gutter systems, which we don't have, and I don't have in my neighborhood. They're, they're building curbs, you know, that all take up extra space. So when you look at a 46-acre, and then you put 96 homes on there, those are very close to half acre. If we wanted, if we wanted a fort, I'm not saying the size. I'm saying per density. We're talking about density, not talking about, if we had them come in and build houses on that 46 acres and didn't do anything, no sidewalks, no curbs, no water-retention pond, no nothing, you would have half-acre lots. 46 times two is 92, right? That's my math. So that's how many houses you'd get back there. So you got to, you got to look at it as a density. That's the conclusion that I came to in researching these, these items. The thing about the school, Ms. Page, I, I don't disagree with anything you're saying. Obviously, schools currently have a problem. They're already in trailers. And I think the school board is trying to address that already. That is something that's beyond anybody here at council can do anything about. The mailbox situation, I made a comment even to the developer whenever they came in. So I want to take responsibility if there's a misunderstanding in that. New neighborhoods do go to mailbox-centralized areas for the benefit of the residents who live there, and also for the mail carrier services. So they're not going around delivering to every single house and adding the problems. The, the situation with the. The situation with the Swigert Road, mailboxes being across the street from people on a busy road like Swigert is beyond me. We talked about this last meeting, did anybody figure anything out about what somebody would have to do, or I couldn't figure it out. I, I'm assuming it's a, is it a post office?
It's postmaster. You'd have to go to the postmaster.
Yeah, I mean, I contacted the post office, the federal government, so I'm waiting to hear back from them.
Oh, really?
They said they would get back to me two weeks ago, so I'm still waiting. But from looking into the issue, it's more, the city would be on board with it, the township would be on board with it. The challenge is going to be, if, like the gentleman said, there's 14, 16 mailboxes on one side of the street, and if five of them want to cross the street, and the federal government now comes and says everybody has to move them across the street, you've got nine homeowners that are now going to have to pay to move their own mailbox across the street that don't want to move it. And so if the, if they get together and say they want to move it, I mean, it's really up to the federal government, not the city.
Okay.
How they, how they do their routes, and because they stop on one side of the street. The post office, not the federal government.
Yeah, right. Yeah, right.
I understand correctly.
Thank you, Randy. The, I agree with the traffic issues in regards to speed, I would like to see it reduced. I made that comment last meeting. The situation with the width of Swigert, I, this morning, coming home from Costco, I almost got hit head-on by a, I believe it was a dump truck, I'm not sure if it was a, if it was a farm truck for grain, or if it was a dump truck. He came left of center in front of Mr. Humans' beautiful house he just built. So there is an issue with the width of that road, and those type of vehicles trav, traversing. Now, I don't know how often they come up and down that roadway, if it's, if it's daily, multiple times a day, but they, they don't really fit in the curve of that, of that roadway. So I could see where people driven off the roadway in that area. So I do feel for you, and I hope that this, this softening of the curb and, and the widening in the area, because they're going to have a, entrances both, both directions, whether that, we're looking, that is still east and west on that, it's kind of east, southeast. But they have, they have a turn-in and a, for left hand and right hand, they have a deceleration. So that, there is going to be a widening for a good swath of Swigert then, I believe. So that's what I read. So I appreciate everybody's comments. The, the price of the homes, though, I, I believe that having a $700,000 house sitting on a smaller lot with your house of comparable size sitting two streets over, I believe that is a plus for anybody that's in this room, when the day comes you want to sell your house, personally. I really thought, well, if they, if they re, if they reevaluate, that's not going to happen, it just happened. So they're not going to bump your, your property value up to that tomorrow. It's done for a while.
Question for you. Has anyone done survey and looked at the people who are actually buying these houses? Now, since this is a, airport, you know, there's probably a number of people who would be coming into California or some other places, and $600,000 for that is a chunk change. But, you know, $600,000 for one of these houses seems like one...
We can't control who buys a house, just like if you were selling yours, we can't tell you who to sell it to, you know, it's just kind of the way it is. That's your property to do with it as you wish, so...
The gentleman who brought up the idea that these houses are priced as expensive as the ones that you paid for this...
I have to admit, I was a little taken aback when I first heard the numbers on that, too, but that's what they're getting, so it's amazing.
The M1 houses on Swigert, their prices are...
Yeah, well, Sky Crossing is still...
Down to 350 to 400,000, now they're down to 250, 240,000.
Yeah, we, Sky Crossing is another example, they're selling for anywhere to 500,000 to 700,000 dollars, so it's just amazing, and they're selling, so, okay.
That's all I have, ma'am.
Okay. Counselor McCurn.
Thank you, Your Honor. I had a question. Randy, it was brought up, I think, by Ed's wife, the, another access point, I know we've got the south way road, that's the way out, he, they were trying to suggest, or at least raise the point, to try to reduce the amount of congestion that may go through their, their neighborhood. Is there, is there another option, another road that we might look at that, try relieve that?
That was something that we looked at early on, because that was my thought, too. However, the engineering study that came back said that, well, first it said a second entrance isn't needed, but more importantly, it said that an entrance at that location is, would be a dangerous intersection for people trying to look left around that curve to be able to pull out in traffic. It would make it into a blind turn, or semi-blind. It would, I was just told it would be a dangerous curve, or a dangerous entry point because of the way the road curves like that.
So there's no other option except the one that's before council?
That was the best location. Originally, very early on, they had it way up north, but it was too close to the other curve.
I see.
So they brought it more centrally located, so that you have the most distance to be able to look, look either way, if you're looking right or left when you're at the exit point, that you can see the furthest at that location.
I know that street gets really jammed up, was brought up, going out, if you've ever driven up the, that, that street, again, it's very tight, coming off of Indian Ripple and...
Yeah, I think it is a country road.
I also agree with Councilmember Littrell on the speed limit and the widening issues that's needed on that road. I think it's very dangerous, even though I know there's always debate about, well, we've had it evaluated, and speed limit is so-and-so, but I think it does need to be reduced.
Yeah, I believe that's the topic.
Yeah.
I believe it's on the, that was something I was going to say, I think it's on the agenda at the end of June.
We will be, we'll be doing that on June 24th. Of course, it's not for tonight's meeting, but it is something, we are going to address that, because it's a good point, so...
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Your Honor.
Counselor Mandur.
Thank you, Mayor. I would once again like to thank everyone for attending tonight. I know it's taking you away from families and things of that nature, so appreciate that. Want to thank staff and the applicant for working together on the hours of construction. I think that's, if this goes through, this is something that will help the existing homeowners, as well as the curb on Swigert. Want to reiterate my concern, because it's in tandem with Mr. Garten's point on Verdure Circle that I brought up at the last meeting, and that is emergency vehicles, school buses getting through that area. It really does concern me. And I would like someone to answer Mrs. Howard's question about minimum widths and lot sizes. If you could give her a direct answer, because this is where I've been struggling as well. It fits under the zoning code, the square footage is right, most of the minimum lot sizes look like they work, but I'm not sure that all do. So I'm wondering if someone can give Mrs. Howard an answer to her presentation, because I've had, I think, similar questions myself.
Let me get to the screen here. Just trying to get to... When we, when the case came through rezoning back in January, the basis by which the start of the discussion was found in Section 158-071D of the zoning code, which covers the RPUD section, and this is that, this is the language for that. It says, "The overall density shall not exceed the maximum density allowed in land use plan for dwelling units per acre for that use." And the use on the land use plan is low-density residential, and that's defined in the, in the land use plan as up to three, or less than 3.01 dwelling units an acre, so up to three dwelling units in acres allowed when you're considering rezoning. But it also established that the minimum lot width in one-family RPUD shall be 60 feet. So that's where that 60 feet came in, it didn't... So when we were talking about lot size in that aspect, we were talking about the lot width, not the square footage per lot at the rezoning. And so that may have caused some confusion when we said we were not talking about lot size, because we weren't talking about square footage of the lot, we were only talking about the width of the lot. But we were, but then we were also talking about, in some instances, there is a requirement that any neighbor, any new development that abuts an existing neighborhood, those lot sizes have to be a minimum of the same size that the abutting neighborhood size. So to the east of this project, or to the west of this project is a RPUD with R1B underlying, so it has to be at least 16,000 square feet, those lots that abut that neighborhood. And then the lot, the neighborhood to the north is R1A, and those minimum lot sizes are 20,000 square feet. So the lot sizes of the lots on the north of this development that abut that other neighborhood have to be the 20,000 square feet. Those are the minimum lot sizes that we talked about at the rezoning, because that's a requirement in that 158-071. But there was no other discussion on internal, interior lots, how big they need to be, or how small they can be, or how big they have to be. But there was the discussion on building setbacks at the rezoning stage, and those were established at the rezoning stage of the 35, or 30-foot front, either four, 30, 40, or 50, depending on if you're in the interior, next to the R1B, or next to the R1A for the rear lot, and then five-foot side yard setback, but no house can be closer than 15 feet to each other. So if you do five on yours, then your next-door neighbor has to do at least 10. If you did seven on one side, then your next-door neighbor has to do at least eight, except on the lots that abut the R1As, they had to have a minimum side yard of at least 10 So it's, it, there's kind of two discussions when you're talking about lot size. One is the lot acreage, and one is the lot width, and at the rezoning, we talked about the lot width, and some lot acreages or square footages, it's just another way of saying it. And then when we got to the zoning, or the site plan stage, and it came up that 60 feet wide was too small of a lot, by then, it was already established in the zoning that they're allowed to have 60-foot lots, because at the rezoning, we talked about the width. All along the density, that if, if they came in at 2.97 dwelling units an acre and had an additional 40 homes, it would still meet the land use plan. They were allowed up to three dwelling units an acre, so allowed up to what, 100, whatever, 96 times 3 is, 46 times 3.
I think it was 146 was the last number I heard.
What's that?
146 was the number I heard.
So they're below that by 50 homes. And if you had, I mean, you would have a lot, smaller lots in the center if they had an additional 50 homes. It would still have to have the 20,000 and the 16,000, but the center would have, but those, those are kind of, in order to get their density, they make those smaller, whereas they, they shield the perimeter and have the existing neighbors kind of get the same feel for their adjacent neighbors, because they get that 20,000 or 16,000.
Thank you. On, yeah, I follow the logic, and your work is meticulous. On page 59 of the agenda, a lot of the frontages are listed, and it does, you know, fit the zoning code, but there are some that are not listed, that I can see at least, and I, I mean, I acknowledge my eyes aren't perfect.
I do not have that pattern.
Yeah, because it's got the, the front, the front and the back widths, and most...
This is what you're talking about?
It looks like it, but again, the eyes, you have to come, to zoom in. So, yeah, I mean, as you mentioned, fits in the north, in the east, as we've discussed. You get into the center, and there are just, I mean, lot five, I can't quite make out, you know...
Are you saying where you're looking at it?
47.7 rather than...
And 13.79? What those numbers?
But if you, yeah, sorry, if you compare it to the others...
Yeah, with that, there's two things with that. First, we measured a lot width at the building setback line, not at the right-of-way line. So on curves, you're going to get a little bit more. Now, like, the 13.79 and the 47.7...
Yep.
What the engineer will do is if there's two straight lines that make the front lot line, they'll measure each of the two kind of tangent lines, rather than the whole of the distance. That makes sense. But you can see the number behind it, it showed at the setback line, it's 60, 61 point, or 63.19.
Okay, but that's for lot four.
And then...
For lot five?
Five. I mean, it's 65 in the back, but you can see...
Sure. Is it 13.79 plus?
Those two numbers combined is going to be over 60 feet.
So you have to add the two in that case?
47 and the 15.7, yeah.
I guess I, there's a little bit of an inconsistency.
Yeah, it's just the way that it's written down on the plans, but there's the underlying condition that says no lot can be less than 60 feet wide, which trumps anything they put on the drawing, but I went and measured each of the lots that were close, and I didn't find one that was less than 60, by the way we measure. I think I may have a diagram of these particular lots at some point.
Because similarly, 29...
Yeah, you, in the, in some of the cul-de-sacs and stuff, yeah.
Well, that's where you get into Verdure Circle and Mr. Garten's really a point, I just, it, I'd like a little more clarification.
Like across the street where you see 44.12, I wish I had my, I wish I had a long weather stick or something like that. But there's a, there's a line that's 44, and then it slightly turns to the right a little bit, and then there's a line that's 29, so that, they're measuring the two vertices rather than the arc as a whole.
Counselor, please, if you...
The numbers are confusing me more than before. So now where it says 59.62 on lot four, that's just one number. So that lot size is 59.6?
That's at the, that's at the right-of-way.
The other side of the curve, so they're going two tangents.
At the right-of-way, it may be that, but we, in our zoning code definition, it says the lot width is the distance between two side, it's two side lot lines measured at the building setback.
Yeah, this is, after the first meeting, I had a very long conversation with Mr. Burkett, and, because I raised the same exact concerns, and, but under our code, it is 30 feet back, because that's where they're building it. And so my requests, Randy did go through and measure everything. In fact, at some point, he sent a diagram of some of them, and they were 60 feet, and on the final plan, they will have to be 60 feet. So, but, and they'll have to be scaled out to 60 feet, because minimum 60 feet, I won't say 60, they can be, but minimum 60 feet, but, but it is at the 30 feet back from the front line, and on a curve, it, it is...
Because if we look at number 29, that's my other area of concern, so you go, yep, and, and down a little bit to the south, and then to the east. Similarly, 90, 29 and 28 do not have formal numbers at the 30-foot setback. 28 makes sense, it would be 62 feet there, thereabouts, but 29 was my question, and yet, I mean, if you technically add them together, it's going to squeak over 60, but there's nothing listed at the 30-foot. So this is it here.
Right. These two numbers added together.
But that's at the... But that's at the, yeah, that's the right-of-way, and that's not at the house, whereas the others have.
Right.
And so I, I trust the process, but this is where it gets into verdure circle again, and it's always concerned me that it's just a little tight.
Mm-hmm.
And to the applicant, just maybe a little spacing it out again. It really worries me, emergency vehicles, school buses, things of that nature, just... I'd like to see the numbers on this, just to make sure this is fitting the zoning code. And it's awfully close, but there are just some numbers missing. Mr. McHugh, you had similar questions and?
I did, because a number of the residents had brought up that issue, and I looked at myself, and, but based upon Mr. Burket's, you know, measurements, and, and the final plat, again, the final plat will have all the, have to have all the measurements, and, but based upon his scaling out of them, they were all more than or equal to 60 feet. In fact, I think, was there one? Randy, were there any that were changed?
Were changed.
Yeah, after you measured.
You measured them all, none of them were less than 60.
Yeah, they all, they all had 60 feet.
There was one that was 60.01.
Yeah.
But it was at 60.
But it was 60. But again, it's 30 feet back, they were, they met the requirement of the, of the zoning ordinance passed.
And you've been out, you've measured each of them?
Yes, I measured them, all the ones that are, were close enough to measure.
And the fire department has signed off on all of this, correct?
They've reviewed it and didn't have any comments on access, or they, all their comments were water, make sure they got the fire hydrants and the lines and stuff. But there's a boilerplate condition that, you know, all concerns of the fire department be met before any subdivision. And should this pass this evening, then the next step will be a final subdivision to act, to take the record plan, which is the legal document that you take over to the county, and that creates the lots. But we take the, drafted that record plan to planning commission, so it gives fire department another, because at that point, you'll have all the construction drawings ready and everything, so they'll, if there's a concern about something, they've brought it up at that time, too. But they didn't have any concerns with this one.
Because I think, as I recall, most of the streets are like 26 or 27 feet wide.
They're like, they're like every neighborhood street.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your work, appreciate it.
Certainly.
Yeah, that's what happened.
Most of the concerns that I had have been brought up there. I will bring up the speed, we are going to look at that on the 24th. That's our next meeting, is on the agenda, so that will be addressed. Well, the widening of the road, that's going to take some money. You know, where does the money come from?
That's exactly right.
That's, that's all we can do, and we will go out and look for it, we'll try to get grants for that. But there is a matching part of all those grants, and I agree that that road should be widened. It's, but it's, right now, it's what we have. And they will be widening parts of it with putting a left turn lane in and deceleration lanes to get into the area. And the curve will be reduced, and it'll be widened at that point because that'll be brought down, it'll have to be, because it'll have to be brought up a little bit wider to do that.
The school buses accidents happen further down by my place, that's where.
Yeah, the accidents that I, because we looked into that as well, we looked into all of those. We did a traffic, the study to that, going back, Chief, how many? Five years?
Chief, five.
It's five years. And Chief, you want to give us what you came up with, please?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. I was tasked with reviewing some of the traffic accident and motor vehicle crash information that is taking place between the two intersections of South Fairfield and Swagert, and in the intersection of South Swagert, Darst, and Stutzman. And in doing so, we have handled 13 crashes in the last five years, going back to January 1st of 19. And again, as bringing up the school bus crashes, there were two of those which were handled by the Ohio State Highway Patrol. Both of those accidents, I have their data here that I was able to get from our post-lieutenant. One of those accidents occurred on December the 15th of 2023 at around 8:40 in the morning, clear conditions, dry roadway, and it was minor injuries where a school bus, and I believe it was a, some type of a large truck collided in the middle of the roadway. The truck was cited for going left the center of Mark Lanes, we call it. That was in the 3733 Swagert Road area. And the other school bus crash was in the same exact area, 3733 Swagert. And again, it was the school bus and another vehicle that, in a sense, what we call side-swiped. They weren't, they didn't hit head-on, but they collided side-swipe-wise as they were passing each other. And again, that vehicle was at fault. Neither of those were speed-related. And in our vehicle crashes, majority of our crashes were involved, over half of them were inclement weather, majority of them were one-vehicle crashes. The only vehicle crash that we had, which was in the 3762 area of Swagert, was where two vehicles met in the roadway. And again, that was an injury crash, and that was more of a head-on collision. And that, again, involved inclement weather. We've had our share of accidents at South Fairfield and Swagert, we've had four of those there, two of those involved in inclement weather. And again, the crashes that I was able to show from our jurisdiction, none of them were speed-related, and again, over half of them were inclement weather, and the majority of those were one-vehicle crashes. And we did have one impaired driver accident. So based on that information that I provided to all of you folks, again, that's the information I have, there was a total of 31 crashes there over the past five years, including our 13 and plus the ones that were handled by the state highway patrol. But again, those two intersections, the Stutzman-Darst-Swagert intersection, probably most of that is not ours. We only have two sides of it. Again, the other intersection of South Fairfield and Swagert, we have the north side and the west side. Again, all those crashes, we're going back five years.
Is that normal? Chief, can I ask a?
This question-answer time, I'm not sure what I'm supposed to do here.
Can I ask a follow-up question on that?
Yes, you can.
For the state highway patrol statistics, you provided the two bus crashes, is that the only two crashes that they have handled?
No.
Or did you just ask them about the bus crashes?
No, I got a whole list here, and that seemed like to be a topic of conversation with the two bus crashes, so I brought that up. They had a total of, let me check my paperwork here real quick, they had a total of 16 crashes in those, in that area there, and several of those, I want to say one, two, three, four of those, with two of those being bus crashes included left of center. So that is the crash data I have for five years. Now, that's, you know, that's, someone were asking if it's normal, but, you know, that is what it's been in the five, past five years for the data that I obtained.
Thank you.
How would that relate to other locations in the city?
Our primary, our crash locations, high crash locations are North Fairfield Road, Colonel Glenn Highway, and Dayton-Zeonia Road and Grange Hall Road. I don't have those specific numbers in front of me right now, but our, that is typically our high crash areas, and of course, the highways.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
I really don't have anything else, I think you guys covered it pretty well. So at this point, I will entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I move to the purpose of taking administrative action, approval of a specific site plan for PUD 23-5. Specific site plan number one, on the basis that city council finds a fact submitted with the application and accompanying materials satisfies the standards and criteria set forth in section 158066. Approval procedures for specific site plans of the Beaver Creek zoning code. Then I further move that the motion with all of the following conditions, our 33, be fully recorded in the minutes of the council meeting.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Ordinance 24-10, an ordinance accepting the charter review commission's recommended administrative changes pursuant to section 13.08 of the charter, and finding the recommended administrative changes are not substantial changes to the charter.
And this is the second reading. Any other input from council? He can do that, Mr. McHugh, for the record, if you would refresh them.
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor and council. Yes, these, these are administrative changes, which is allowed under the charter. Council has to adopt it by at least five members on ordinance. They are changes that do not change the substance or intent of the charter. These, the charter review mission went through in great detail, feeling that a few changes could be made to make the charter a little more readable and to clarify, and such as having a uniform term for the city, uniform term for the city manager, putting some captions in so that when you're looking at a section, the section may say something, the whole article may say something, but when you get to the section, actually, when it has A and B, it would actually say what A and B were, so that if you're looking at it quickly, it'd make it easier to someone who doesn't work with the charter constantly to, you know, know you need to go to that section. So that, that's the changes. Now, you know, there will be some other changes, but any other changes would have to be approved by council and then voted on. But these are by our charter, you can make administrative changes, and that's what these are.
Thank you. Anyone else? As I said, this is a second reading.
Motion to approve ordinance 2410, Your Honor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 24-10. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 24-11. Okay, it was a second reading, yeah. No, no, yeah. That's why I said, this is a second reading. No, no, I, I do know that.
Yeah, hang on, hang on. Ordinance 24-11, to approve supplemental appropriations and certify additional revenue and authorize inter-fund transfers for fiscal year beginning January 1, 2024, and ending December 31, 2024, and to amend ordinance 24-9, 24-6, and 23-36.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of city council. This is just a couple of items that we need to clean up. Again, your budget is always beginning of the year, but it's a living and breathing document during the course of the year, and we just have to adjust that along the way. And that's what we're going to propose tonight. The first thing is the Energy Special Improvement District. Ashford Energy Special Improvement District was approved back in 2021. Seems like a long time ago. We get these things done, we sent over the assessment. Fortunately, I just didn't pick that up in the budget for this particular year. So they made their first payment this year, and we have to certify the revenue coming in for the assessment, and then we need to also appropriate the ordinance or the amount for the debt service payment. So that amount is 388,755. So it's basically just an in and out that has to be recorded. The next item is, if you recall, we bought the property for Spring House Park. The committed parks fund came up a little short in buying the property in its entirety. The general fund then advanced them, the funds, to accomplish that with the thought that when the park fees come in for other new developments, that that would offset that, and that we would pay back to the general fund. Again, from an accounting standpoint, advances are supposed to be temporary distributions of funds that are to be repaid back within a year or two, a short-term thing. And so I noticed that we had picked up $54,000 in park impact fees, and so I thought during this appropriation, that I would transfer some of that advance back to the general fund using those funds. So that's one of the other transactions. And again, because it's an inter-fund transfer, we have to kind of depict that to the county auditor also as a separate line item, just so that they're aware of what we're doing. The last thing was, actually, two last things here, but the, we originally budgeted a ODOT grant for the purchase of a new senior center van. That particular grant didn't come through, but we had budgeted for that. And then we found out that the Green County Council on Aging actually budgets annually an amount for the jurisdictions that have transportations within Green County, and this happens to be the year that they actually allocated out funds for the city of Beaver Creek. So what we wanted to do was originally, when we had budgeted the van, as everything, the van price went up, it used to be 81,189. The new quote that we got was 86,108. So because we had the 81 already appropriated for that amount, we just need to appropriate additional 4919 to accomplish that purchase of that particular van. And the grant money was already appropriated to begin with, and this will be just a little bit less. But the senior center growth fund, which is where the money comes in from, people that tip and give donations to the, the transportation system when they're utilizing the service, they have funds available in that growth fund to make sure that that offset is paid for. So again, there's no additional recognition of any additional revenue, it's already sitting in fund balance, so. And then the last item is, and this is another fantastic item, that we received a donation of $52,784 from an anonymous donor through the Green County Community Foundation, and the request was to donate that money for us to apply that to the purchase of another van off into the future. So a lot of van activity here and coming and going, but the bottom line is that we will update the fleet, we'll get a new van, and we have some seed money for next year's addition, too. But again, we will be applying for the ODOT grant for a van replacement also next year. So again, it's a win-win situation here, so.
So we could possibly add another one.
Well, again, now they're, you know, we're getting to the point where the age on the vans and the mileage is starting to escalate here a little bit faster than it had been in the past. So again, now those replacements, now that I think we have the number we need in the fleet, now it's just coming in and using that money to replace the older vans with some newer models. So I'd be happy to answer any question you might have.
Thank you very much. This is an ordinance, so there is public input, so I'll open the public portion of this. Anyone like to say it, please come forward, give your name and address. Seeing none, I will close the public portion of that. This is a single reading. Any questions for Mr. Casara?
Have none.
I have a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 24-11.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 24-11. As a single reading.
As a single reading. Right.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Oh, that's right, here it is. It is a roll call. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Yes.
Councilmember Kern?
Yes.
Councilmember Doer?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Littoral?
Yes.
Mayor Adams?
Yes. Thank you. Resolution twenty-four dash seventeen.
Resolution twenty-four dash seventeen, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Beaver Creek Township for the project known as the Beaver Valley Road Widening Project, PID number one-one-nine-nine-five-eight.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. This project was one that we went for for a grant with MVRPC in two thousand and twenty-two, and we were successful along with Beaver Creek Township. So, project entails widening of Beaver Valley Road to three lanes, and including, it includes curb and gutter, storm sewer, and continuation of the side path along the east side of the road down to Dayton Zina to connect from where it ends at Hunter's Ridge up north and down to Dayton Zina for the bike path down there. With this, the, or the breakup between local, for the local, between the city and the township was found to be thirty percent with the township and seventy percent with the local based off of the impacts for the project. So, the numbers that you see with this for the city share and township share shows that thirty and seventy percent for the local share broken up for each of those funding splits for engineering right away and construction. With this too, with the success of being able to get the grant, the grant is for seventy percent federal, thirty percent local match. So, we do have a total, that is for construction only. The federal share is a hundred, or one million, two hundred and seventy-three thousand, three hundred dollars, and then the local share is, yeah. City would be four hundred and fifty thousand, nine hundred, or ninety, and township share for that is ninety-five thousand, six hundred and ten. With this, there is a resolution for us to enter into agreement with the city, or with the township for this joint project, and we recommend moving forward with that. So, I'll take any questions.
Good project. Good. Yeah, I think that'll help that out tremendously. Any input from council?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you for your great work on this. Can you refresh my memory in terms of the timeline and whether there's been a change from the packets we've received?
Sure.
I believe there has, but, yeah.
Yeah, sorry, Councilmember Doer, I did not bring that information with me, but I do believe with what I remember when we did this, the construction, I believe, is in twenty-seven or twenty-eight. So, and then with design and right away happening before that, years prior to that, yes.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Do I have a motion?
I have a motion to approve resolution twenty-four seventeen.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution twenty-four dash seventeen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign.
Thank you.
Decision item, appointment to the planning commission, the vacancy remaining term from June eleventh through February twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-six. We have a motion to open nominations.
I move to open nominations, Your Honor.
Second.
Okay. Nominations have, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any nominations?
I nominate William Jones, Your Honor.
I would nominate Janelle Rigalsky.
Okay.
Close nominations?
Second.
I have a motion of closed nominations. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign against. We have two nominations, William Jones and Jean Rigoleski. One at a time. We'll just do, I guess, a show of hands to start with for William Jones. Janelle Rigalsky? So, five-one, I would assume that's, I need a motion to appoint William Jones.
Move to appoint William Jones to the unexpired term.
A second.
Okay, a motion and a second to appoint William Jones. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is complete there. Council time. Where do we start? Councilman Kern?
Thank you, Your Honor. I had the privilege to attend AcuPet Urgent Care, thirty-eight, ninety-nine Indian Ripple. Dr. Sacks and Dr. Hopkin, kind of emcees there, a lot of other people, but it's a great addition to the veterinarian need in our community. Also attended First Thursday at Marriott, the mall. It was another great opportunity to see folks and to really enjoy the hospitality of the Marriott. Thirdly, attended the Legislative Breakfast, Green County Career Center, which was very interesting Friday. Got a lot of information on different issues. And then, of course, the most important thing happening this morning, the promotion of Sergeant Amato to captain and Officer Tremboli to sergeant. It was a very moving experience and learned a little bit about the police badge that I didn't know. Thank you, Your Honor.
Anniversaries.
Oh, yeah, I don't want to forget the anniversary. Pardon me. Kim Edwards, Human Resources, thirty-seven years. Scott Molinar, of course, police, twenty-four years. Todd Snyder, public service, twenty-four years. Olivia Zilar, police, one year. Travis Zilars, police, one year. Taylor Smart Whiting, police, two years. Dick Cornet, public services, twenty-four years. Chris Earls, public service, nineteen years. Steve Croucher, cemetery, twelve years. Ed Ellison, public services, three years. Debbie Haynes, clerk of council, three years. And Francisco Tremboli, police, nine years. Again, a special congratulation to all these people for their service to the community.
It's kind of nice that Frank Tremboli was promoted on his anniversary, so. Councilman Doer?
Thank you, Mayor. It's been a fun few months in the Doer household. I'd like to thank Quest Gymnastics for their work with our twins. They've had a wonderful time, and our son just wrapped up his season with the Beaver Creek Soccer Association, where I had the privilege of serving as his assistant coach, and so that was an, too much fun had by me on that. I attended the Villasette Kings Crossing HOA meeting. Also had the opportunity to attend the MVRPC meeting. So, very interesting, and a few projects in the pipeline potentially there. Alongside Mayor and Councilman Kern, I attended the Chamber of Commerce Legislative Breakfast. And so, again, as Councilman Kern noted, very interesting, useful to hear just the local impact of federal and state dollars and have that connection point. And then finally, I'll be away during the next meeting, so ask for your consideration and excusal. Little bit of tourism, a little bit of research for my other position as a university professor, so I'll be doing some of those things. But, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Garcia?
Thank you. So, thank you to Councilman Doer for covering for me while I was out of town the last few weeks at the MVRPC meeting. Appreciate that. And also, congratulations to the two officers who were promoted today. We had one promoted to sergeant and one to captain, as we talked about earlier. And thank you to all of our law enforcement who continue to remain dedicated in this position. It is not an easy job. We appreciate all of their service. And also, I was also able to attend a Legislative Breakfast for the Dayton Chamber of Commerce before I went out of town a few weeks ago. Always very exciting to hear about what's happening in Columbus, how they're helping to serve our small local businesses as well as our community as a whole. So, thank you for that. That's it for me.
Thank you very much. Councilman Schwartz?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to echo my fellow council members, congrats to Captain Amato and Sergeant Tremboli on their promotions, and also a congratulations to Captain Sumner on his upcoming retirement on Friday. I'd like to thank him for his over thirty-two years of service to our community. It's a lot of time and a lot of dedication, a lot of time away from family, and so we appreciate that. I had to kind of laugh when I was looking at the anniversaries. It feels like just yesterday we were swearing in Officers Zilar and Officer Solars. I can't believe it's been over a year. And so, congratulations to them on their first year, and I hope it went as fast for them as it has went for us. I also want to give a congratulations to the AcuPet Care Center. I was unable to attend that ribbon cutting, but I think that that is a huge addition to our community. Having used many emergency medical vet appointments, it will be nice to have one much closer to home and a lot less stressful, and so very excited to have them here. Last, certainly not least, the parade is coming just around the corner. I cannot believe that next month is July. So, if anyone would like to enter into the parade, please make sure that you log on to the website and put in your application, and I hope that you will join us. I believe that we are still accepting sponsorships. So, if you would like to sponsor any of the events at the parade and/or the Fourth of July, please don't hesitate to reach out. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Littoral?
Guess I'm last. I would like to take a moment and show my appreciation, he's not here, Jeff Mormon. I had the opportunity to read through a report of his in, when he went out to discuss issues at the Autumn Springs area. The, it was a project concerning the stormwater out there. He had a question from an individual resident. He went out to address the issue, and when he got there, and I've been in situations like that, he found out he was speaking with about fourteen or fifteen residents that lived out there. And he did a good job helping them understand exactly what was going on. I think it's important to give him kudos to going out there and doing what is needed, even though it probably wasn't a real fun time having that many people out there by yourself. I had the opportunity to attend the Beaver Creek Golf Club party on the patio. The only thing I would like to say about it that I regret is that there's not going to be more of them this year. It was a great time. It was a really good time out there. I also appreciate Katie being out there, and she's at everything I've ever been to, so I appreciate her and her time. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. I did a couple of things. I was invited to speak at the dedication of the John Ankeny, for the John Ankeny sign at the Ankeny Soccer Complex. That's an amazing complex out there. It's known not only locally but nationally and internationally. We've had teams from all over the world come in here and play, and everyone that talks about it or has played there really comments on how good a job they do with those fields. It's nice to have something like that here in Beaver Creek. And I know John was one of those guys that, you know, there are certain people, you say a name, and you don't have to say what they did because you know what they did. It was, he was just an amazing, amazing individual. I was also able to attend the Assumption of Command for the four forty-fifth Air Base Wing. Colonel Perry assumed command that was delayed probably about four months because of some other issues with the Air Force. And that's the group who flies at C seventeen that you can reach out and touch some mornings. Doesn't seem like, at least it seems like that. I also attended the ribbon cutting for AcuPet Urgent Care. It's an intermediate facility. They don't do really aggressive things, but it's just like an urgent care for adults. If you've got a headache, you go there, you know, there's something like that, so it's nice to have that here. I was also invited to speak at the ribbon cutting for the Ashford of Beaver Creek. It's a new, a new facility here in Beaver Creek that offers independent living, assisted living, and memory care. And if you haven't a chance to go visit and just see that place, I would highly recommend it. They've done a really nice job with that. As I commented to them, I remember when we approved that here back in nineteen twenty, or nineteen twenty. I'm not that old. Twenty-twenty or twenty-one, I don't remember what it was. I saw the concept for it, and they really outdid themselves. They did a really nice job with that facility. It's really a nice facility. I also attended, along with the others here, with the Green County Legislative Breakfast, heard from a lot of our national, state, and local leaders. One of the things that Congressman Turner brought up is that now officially Wright Patterson Air Force Base has thirty-eight thousand people inside the fence. That's an amazing number. That's more than doubled over the last, I don't know, twenty years, something like that. It's just amazing to have that out there. My wife and I attended the concert series last night. It was the first one. It's hosted by the Parks and Recreation Department. It was a great night, beautiful weather. The band was good. And I want to really thank the Parks and Recreation Department for hosting that. I know we had several sponsors. Katie was out there, took some great pictures. So, I saw those, you posted today, they really, really looked good, so. And there was a really large turnout from the community, which was really nice to see. Next concert is this coming Sunday, from seven to eight, and it's going to be the Hathaways. So, if you get a chance to go out, try to do that. I, again, I was honored to be here this morning at City Hall for the promotion of Officer Frank Tremboli and Sergeant Nick Amato, Frank to sergeant and Nick to captain. I've known these two gentlemen basically since they started, and I've worked with both of them, and they're, they're amazing gentlemen. They're, they're going to do a great job for the city of Beaver Creek. Don't forget that this coming Sunday is Father's Day. You get an opportunity, if your father's still around, consider spending some time with him. I wish I could. I don't have one anymore. So, if you have one around, please take advantage of that. And last, I wanted to say something about Councilman Kern. He had a birthday recently, June first, and he and Mara on June fifteenth will celebrate sixty-one years of marriage. Yeah, and that's all I have.
I just briefly wanted to thank you to Councilmember Littoral bringing that up on, about the stormwater project. We do have it posted, so this is our website, beaver creek ohio dot gov. Go down to City News, there it is. It had been a little while since we reminded people of what it is, and now that there's machinery and people, a lot of people are calling thinking, oh, so you've began the park. Nope, nothing to do with the park. This is like an overview here of it. This pond is on the parkland. That's where the water issues began, and it flows, I guess you'd say, east and southeast. And it was where this goes and goes on over to North Fairfield where the questions from residents were concerned. I just want to stress that these are new ponds that we dug, the retention. So, they're made to hold water to time-release, slow-release the water, where now water just goes on the surface, and as fast as it wants to go or can go, it goes. So, the ponds add control to it so that it avoids flooding. So, that's the concept behind it, and you see in our new developments, this is typically, just like the ones just passed today, it's the same kind of a pond that then controls the water release. So, I think that's what Mr. Mormon was explaining to the individuals, because they were thinking, you're doing something up here that's going to push all the water faster downstream, and no, it actually will help downstream because it's going to control the time release of it. We'll go put more information out on the In Touch again, and on Vineland Trail as well, the other stormwater project, we'll have another. But this is all, all the information and detail and pictures of what's being done. Thank you to Nick, who had drone pictures. He's an awesome drone pilot. So, just wanted to update everybody on that, so watch out for more additional information. And lastly, most of everybody's kind of covered, so I'm not going to dwell on this, but Captain Sumner, it's been my pleasure working with him for the nearly eight years I've been here and working with him in crisis mode, such as the Walmart second shooting that happened just a year ago. Stand-up captain, stand-up man of integrity. So, it's been my honor and pleasure in working with him, and congratulations. This morning, yes, we had the two, there's putting names with face. Captain Amato is on the left, and on the right is now Sergeant Tremboli. So, we do congratulate both of them. It's an honor, again, of mine when a chief can come to me and have a recommendation for a promotion, and it's like I already know both gentlemen. The both gentlemen's reputation are outstanding, and it's just like my pleasure to promote and to be there for, to see. I think somebody said, Chief did. Chief told them both, though, like, family, family is first, you know. them both, though, like family, family is first, you know. And that is very true. So congratulations to both of them. Summer concerts, yes. Sorry I missed last night. Some other duties I had to do, but yeah, we have, if you missed last night, we have plenty more coming the whole summer. Parks works really hard to set these up, and there's a lot of activity around it. And the good news is, there's a little bit of music, different genre for everybody. So please look at attending. It's a great attendance. And Fourth of July is, Councilwoman Schwartz already mentioned, so parade starts at 6:00 PM on the Fourth, and then live music, children's activities, the bounce house kinds of activities, and plenty, she forgot about this, plenty of food trucks. So come on down, and the fireworks hosted, which we'll be honoring the actual donation next meeting, will have the Josie, did I say that right? Family will be coming for the, to present officially to the city council their donation because they sponsored, the Josie, Josie family will be sponsoring the Fourth of July fireworks this year. So that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's now time for citizen comments. Does anyone like to address council on any subject? Please come forward, state your name and address. You'll have three minutes. Don't everybody jump at once. All right, seeing none, we'll close the citizen comments. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to adjourn, your honor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.